I do too.
All right, now it's your turn.
All right, this is the Finance Committee. Here to, we're meeting to discuss the city budget. And today we'll be meeting with the Water Department. Chris, can we get row call please?
Councilman Scranton is absent due to military leave. Councilman Livingston?
Present.
Councilman McCollum is absent. Councilman Daley?
Present.
Councilman Papastra?
Present.
Councilman Montz?
Present.
President Sciaman is absent. That is four here and three absent.
All right. So we will open pages one forty-three, one forty-five, one forty-six. And we'll go through one fifty, or do you want to go further than that, Larry?
Go ahead, open one thirty-nine.
Yeah, one thirty-nine is the start of the sequence. And it goes up to one sixty-one.
We can open one thirty-nine, one sixty-one.
Yeah, you can do that.
So on one forty-three, why is the insurance allocation so much lower this year?
The same page that I said to you last night where we talked about the fund balance in the insurance fund. Because they're like two point five million dollars in it. So I mean, all the funds are getting their shares.
On page one forty-two, the interest in earnings. The encumbered number is quite high compared to the adopted from two thousand and nineteen. And I'm just interested to know how that happened.
The interest numbers, are we talking about interest in earnings?
Yeah, FX forty-two, four oh one.
Due to mainly us investing in NY class. Okay. We're getting, we're increasing at point zero already. Beginning of this year, we're getting two percent. This year, now it's probably down to about one point eight. Maybe that's going to be in all the funds. It's the interest in this more higher than that.
Okay.
I should say the last four or five percent.
Joe, on page one forty-five, Engineering Services line. We're increasing that by about thirty thousand dollars. What are, what is our increase in Engineering Services cost associated with that?
Most likely, the engineering fees went up because we were building a new tank of it, hardy. So they, the way they do it is it is every, everything that they have to use to, for the water plant. Like more water mains, more of this, all their work, that's how they figure out how much time they have to spend on it. So their fees go up if they have to do more work for our, our section.
So there's fee increases you're saying?
Yes. It depends on how much work they have to put into our, our side of the city as a whole.
Okay, basically, we take the Engineering Department, we allocate it out to different departments that do work. And what Joe's saying is they anticipate doing more work next year due to these things.
All right. And for the, in the same page, for the information in the Tech Service, got about a seven thousand dollar increase?
So again, we backcharge, this is, we backcharge them for the software maintenance and hardware. Security systems going in there, so there's maintenance we have to pay on those systems. It's all paid out of my department and the general fund. And then we charge water and sewer their shares.
They did a significant upgrade over there.
Significant upgrade because of the last audit, we had to upgrade our security a lot.
Okay.
One forty-six you've got postage. Then how come they hasn't gone up, it's supposed to go up in January?
So what do you? The postage, one of the reasons it has not gone up is some people are taking their bills online.
Oh, okay.
Okay, not a lot yet, but there are some that are doing it. Hopefully it's increased, but at this point, there is something, it's a progression.
Gotcha. I was just, didn't want you to cut yourself short, that's all. Because I know postage is going up again in January.
Did you address anything on page one forty-five, Personnel? Proposed budget, one fifty-nine. Last year, the budget was one eighty, or one eighty-one. Did we move any around?
Did we? That was the one that we moved mechanic someone out of.
To Burmese, yes.
Right, yeah.
Danny, we opened one thirty-nine, one sixty-one.
Great, Danny.
Cool, Councilman?
On page one forty-nine, the meters, repairs and parts dropped by twenty-five hundred. Ready for that? Is it just highly variable from year to year?
Yes.
Yes.
And one of the aspects of this too, Dan, is that we need a lot of taking out old meters and putting in new meters, both small and large. I think we did like five hundred meters last, we jumped, probably five hundred again this year, plus a bunch of larger ones.
Yeah, this is the first year we started the large meter replacement program. So a lot of that, we don't have to worry about. We have that under control.
Page one forty-seven, sort of similar vein of a question I asked yesterday, Chuck. So the gas dash heat line, you have budgeted at thirty-eight thousand. The last year, we only expended thirty-one thousand. And at this point in the year, we're already at seventeen thousand. So if you are looking at seventeen thousand being through the month of July even. You know, this, 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 seven months of a twelve-month year. If seventeen thousand was even just six months, you know, double that would be thirty-four thousand. So the same vein of what I was asking yesterday, is there still room for savings there in the budget? If we're already at seventeen thousand, and last year we only expended thirty-one thousand. Also keeping, keeping in mind that the, the big winter months happen early in the year.
So numbers in September last year jumped up to like, prior to November, two, three hundred dollars. In September, they jumped up last year thirteen hundred, twenty-five hundred, two thousand, thirty-three hundred.
Why did they jump up in September? Weird. Or heat to jump up?
Well, do they use gas for other things at the plant, or is this just a, a heating function?
A bus station, building?
The gas will be for the heat. So imagine, you know, depends on the weather. If it's kind of colder September, or colder October, it's more, you know, gas than wood. Some October.
Did you get anything in the plant with gas? Like the process stuff?
At the, at the filter plant, or all, all of the systems, all gas. Plus the chemical, plus the raw water, they're all, they're all gas.
But this is the?
And, and we have the generators, the generator runs on gas too. And when, we have to use the generator periodically, use the testing. That would have bigger effect on that.
So then I'm a little confused exactly what this line is for. Is it?
It's gas for eating all these, all, all the gas that goes into operating that operation.
So it's not just heating?
Right.
You've got a really tight budget, Joe. So I think what Karen is looking to say, can you, is what, from thirty-eight, can you cut two thousand or something to that? Or do you need a period? I would understand if you wanted.
I would be wary of that because you, you just don't know with gas. I mean, we could, but.
How variable is the, the price for, for gas?
We're pretty okay with the gas price. We're not okay with it, I say it's twenty-five percent.
Right.
That's the number that I don't know yet. And if they do that, these numbers, I mean, I'd be.
And, and when is the, the PSC likely to make a ruling on that? Like how fast do they do? What's that?
Probably November, December.
And it will go into effect?
Probably next year.
Okay.
I don't know what that's going to bring.
Yeah, no one.
That's any enormous amount of money.
Yeah. I mean, even if it's typical of what the PSC does, I mean, half of that, then that's still a huge chunk.
All right, skip it.
On page one fifty, under Professional Services, only encumbered at six hundred bucks out of seventy-five hundred. What's the, when do we perform these leak detection services typically? Or is that when they're doing leak detection this year, or next year, and this year it's for something else?
Some years, when we have a majority of breaks, we gotta call them leak detection. If our guys can't find it. So far, we've been lucky. This year has been extra dry, we haven't had a lot of breaks. But here comes fall, winter, I mean. And every time you call these guys, it's, it's a thousand dollars a day just to come in. If my guys can't find it. And believe it or not, it sounds funny that, well, community can't find a leak.
That doesn't sound funny to me.
Sometimes, sometimes it's pretty hard to find a leak.
They come in from Utica, don't they? Joe?
What's that?
Comes in from Utica, doesn't it?
Uh, there's two or three different companies, it depends which one we could get.
I know, but one time we came in from Utica, when we were on Conklin Avenue, we got served a leak.
And I, I bought my guys, you know, new equipment to try to help find leaks before. And so far, like what we've had this year, they've been able to find it before we've had to use this line to call them. But here comes winter, and we could get a leak every week for crying out loud.
And you're not talking about leaks going from the roof to the house, you're talking about the?
Main, main leaks.
Leaks underneath the ground and go do whatever.
I mean, you could get, a lot of times if a, a water main break, you know, you see on TV, it's blowing up by the ground. That doesn't always happen. Sometimes it's, you're here, and four blocks down there, the water's coming up. And, you know, it's not that easy to find sometimes.
It can take for a while before you even find something, where actually the road starts collapsing.
Yeah, we, we usually will find them through our reservoirs. The leveling in our reservoirs, all of a sudden the reservoir keeps dropping two or three foot. Only usually drops half a foot at this, this time zone. And then we say something's wrong, send the guys out there, and they look all over, they can't find nothing. Well, then we have to really do something because there's a leak someplace, and we have to call leak detection. These guys are real professionals that come in and they charge a lot of money.
I spent five thousand dollars in November and December.
Okay. Great.
On the Engineering Services on one forty-five?
No, you're right.
You're fine.
You might have a different question.
I was just wondering, like, I'm pretty sure we have it called for what you need, I was just wondering what it is.
Yeah, like, like I explained a little earlier. We get backcharged for any services that the Engineering Department does for us.
Okay.
And, you know, when their load is more, they're going to charge us a little bit more. Because they have to put that many more people working on our projects instead of some other projects.
All right, thanks.
Chuck, you may have addressed this in previous budget hearings, but, so forgive me if I'm asking a redundant question. But the health insurance drop, is that because of new contract with the plumbers? Because of their, the like, the retiree contribution? Or does that, does health insurance doesn't get cheaper?
All of the above.
Okay.
It's due to their health insurance and percentage that they pay, okay? Which surely hasn't gone down, gone down, it's really gone up a little bit. The amount they're paying and the rates, okay? The retirees over sixty-five have gone down significantly. Okay, that was a fifty percent cut. And I have a forty thousand dollar contingency because I don't want to find the rates up or anything.
Okay.
It's across the board, Dan, what you're going to see is the health insurance went down overall, mostly due to the fact of savings in the over sixty-five Medicare line.
Okay. And page one fifty-seven, what's the, the salary adjustment for? Do you lose somebody, is that for shifting that person over to, to D W?
Yes.
One fifty-seven.
If you look at page one forty-nine, we unfunded two labor positions.
Okay.
And we, we put that offset as a negative in the back.
Got it, okay.
Unfunded, unfunded. So we listed them, but we're not going to fill them. Is that what we did?
Yeah.
Two unfunded, two of these. Okay, never, it was the water sewer system maintainers.
Right.
That we unfunded, and there's the negative in the back. And, and we added two labors. Can't get water sewer system maintainers, we're hiring labors to get them trained to let them promote them. So there's a savings and we put the negative in the back.
But we're going to come back to you after they, um.
Get trained up?
Trained up and put them back into that other position.
There's no system maintainers that, at this stage, were experienced enough to, to get the job, the position. So that's why.
You gotta think of it like this, Dan, there's not a whole lot of people that are trained outside the city that can do this.
Basically, none. They have to work at a water plant in order to get this trained.
So long-term investment?
Yes.
Or are you involving mid-term?
But we're not funding the position, like, you know, we're not going to fire next year, but if you found it here, you may do it up. There's a plan there with individuals to get them up there.
I'll make a motion to approve pages one thirty-nine to one sixty-one. If no one else has any more questions.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone against? Pages one thirty-nine through one sixty-one?
Right.
It's approved.
We need one ninety-seven.
Before we get into all this, probably about a month ago, when we were going through the budget. We were looking at all the transfer to capitals, then Joe had different lines. Don't have your own good kid, now we moved probably two hundred thousand dollars around in different accounts. That was so that Joe could use that money on things that he needed right now, okay? For in the coming year, other stuff. Because there's no rule that you score for another five years, okay? So what we're doing here, a lot of these things here, is we're putting money into different accounts so that he can do something bigger down the road, rather than just day to day. Like we moved eleven land, I was hiding, maybe like under twenty-five thousand dollars that wasn't going to be used in, as soon as you do other things. So when you look at like lab equipment, he may need seventy-five hundred dollars next year, but if he only needs twenty-five hundred, he doesn't lose that five thousand extra. But next year, we may not fund all seventy-five hundred. We can see what they need, okay? So we do, this has really done a lot to help out the sewer fund, the water fund. Give them money to buy the things they need, but not overcharge the residents for water. Like every year, we might have been putting twenty thousand into all these accounts, and they would only use ten thousand, okay? This is just moving what they have, analyzing it every year to see what they need or don't need. And we agree upon it during the budget negotiations.
In other words, we changed things around a little bit, like, say, with like our hydrants. We used to buy all the hydrants upfront, stock them, and then the contractors would come to us, get the hydrants from us. And it was like, we were like a middleman. So now, any of the contractors do street work, they're obligated to buy the hydrants on their own. So we didn't have to stock that many. So then Chuck figured this all out, Jeff figured this all out. And we changed that around, so we don't have to keep a big stock of stuff, just in case.
Was it costing us more for the contractors?
No.
It's actually costing us less.
It's costing us less.
I can't tell you that every one of those contractors paid us for those.
Right, right.
Or they deducted from their own.
Right.
Okay, when you're talking about the amount of work that we're doing, we lose control of it this way, they have to buy it. We're not obligated.
Right.
They have to buy a.
And they have to do it to our specs, so they're getting the same hydrants that we spec out, so.
And you know how much money, I mean, sometimes they'll put a premium on it, but they have to buy it themselves, so they.
Well, when they buy it for us, they're buying it for us through, through whatever company they're buying it for. So they can't like tag on, you know, an extra twenty percent or whatever. Because it's our price they're getting it for.
Very good. In this meter program, that's what you were talking about, buying, buying new meters. What do these things cost? Forty thousand bucks gets us how many?
Depends, uh, your residential meters are a hundred, a hundred twenty-five bucks a piece, five eighths, three quarters, you know, like that. But when you're talking the commercial meters, some of those are four, five thousand dollars, eight thousand dollars, ten thou. Depends how big it is, how, depends how, you know, where it's going into. If it's a turbine, or if it's a, you know, regular meter, it's, 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 it depends on the, the company. Or like, like the hospital would have a bigger meter, they might have a couple of them actually. And, you know, that meter might cost four grand, five grand. But our guys, usually on the bigger meters, we, we started this meter program, large meter installed. We, we hire out a company to do it because this is like a major, major job. And our guys usually do the smaller residential stuff.
And is there some advantage to having a new meter versus an old one, or is it more accurate?
For us it is, for the city it is.
Yeah.
Because even though, I've never seen many of these meters come back, we send them out independently to be tested. The residential ones, usually the commercial ones, we can't, they're too big, they either got to test them in place, if they can do that, or they can't be tested. But usually the larger meters that are been in place, they've been in place since Bingham started, Binghamton. And, you know, they're, they slow down. And you're not really getting the revenue, they don't capture all the, all the flow that's going through them, you don't get proper revenue.
To give you an example, explain a little to Joe, saying this, a lot of the newer meters that are, what do we call them? Multi, what do you call them? Dye low.
Yeah, yeah.
Double compound.
Okay, where before the old meters had one spinning thing on there, okay? Now they have two, one high, one low. So that if someone, say you're in the hospital, someone flushes a toilet in an office, it may not ever ring up.
That flow, because it was below the meters register, it didn't really calculate. Now with these new meters, you know, if, if somebody turns on a faucet to brush their teeth, you're going to get that flow by there, you're going to get that reading. So it's more accurate, yeah.
Let me say a couple of other things to you, Joe. Give Joe and Jeff a little bump here. The people that work in his office and work with the meters and work with the people do a fantastic job. If you have a resident that has a problem with leaks in their, their water bill jumps up, these people jump on it, go do an analysis to try to help them figure out what the problem is. You guys probably don't hear that positive, you hear someone bitching about a high water bill, okay? But these guys jump on it and try to get it fixed, as well as making sure the meters are operating properly. I mean, most of them are usually slow, but they're high, they get a phone call, they'll replace it and look at it.
Right, because we, because we build quarterly, which is, you know, four months. So if you have a broken pipe in your house, or a toilet's running, after four months, that bill could be like, phew, big. And we tried to get billing monthly, but that just didn't work out. But if, with the newer meters, our guys are able to detect it quicker. And you'll call a resident up, say, look, you know, last month, you know, a lot of, it looks like something's wrong in your house. Want us to come and take a look, whatever.
And if you guys get complaints from people getting shut-off notices, which are probably more active today than we have been in five years.
Yeah.
Of staying on top of the stuff. These people have forty-five, fifty days to pay their bill, and then another twenty-one days or so before we actually shut it off. Okay, that is.
You get a long, you get a long time.
Okay, they, they get multiple notices and things like that, okay?
You worked like with a, a little lost topic, but when you brought up the shut-off notices. People that are elderly on fixed incomes that sometimes run into difficulty paying them, and they get a shut-off notice. I mean, I can't imagine you, I mean, I know NICE, there's no article when it comes to that, don't go and.
We, we don't shut them off. We, they, they barely, you really have to do something way out of the ordinary to shut off. They, they could come downtown, they get an hearing, and, you know, they could explain their part of it. And usually, that's all in the Corporation Council, usually, you know.
Work something out, right?
Work something out, they.
And even before that, Chris, a lot of times, Teresa's office, okay, I had a treasurer live here the other day. She'll be making phone calls to DSS or other office for the agent to find out they can get money to assist these people.
And she's very good, she takes it real serious, and she gets down, you know, right, but dirt helps these people out, she's really good.
And in due course, if they request a hearing, the shut-off is stayed until a determination is made. And even though the city doesn't have a quote payment plan system, we can't possibly administer an installment payment plan. Generally, partial payments will also stave off shut-off. There's plenty of case law with regards to the equities that a city, meaning, services will have to consider are shut-off. One of them is age, another is financial capacity, and another is the season. So all of that is taken into consideration. And actually, this year was the first year where we designated one particular hearing officer to hear all of those cases so it could be done more efficiently. Because for a long time, shut-offs were delayed much, I should say, much longer because we weren't able to process those hearings as fast as we are now. Also, there's another line of cases that recently came out with regards to tenants' rights and the shut-off. Because you can't be liable for an obligation that isn't yours. So actually, the city's made, I think, some really good strides in working with residents on that critical lines in the last year and year and a half.
Yeah, that's always been a concern, when it's life sources that get shut off. And I've always.
I'll make a motion to approve the water section on page one ninety-seven.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye. Two of seven.
Their fees are on page two oh seven.
So what's, what does call a plumber mean? Do we charge them to call a plumber, or is that just something that we didn't take before? They call a plumber on their behalf, or, and this is the service charge for frozen service fee third quarter.
They now have to call a plumber.
They have to call.
They have to call a plumber.
There's also a few lines on the other, on the bottom of two oh six.
Basically, what we're doing here, so we're not really changing anything at the top, right? The first was a home plumbing inspector.
Yeah, the, the fees start on page two oh six, but there's no change.
There's no change on that.
And two oh seven, there's.
Yeah, they're the same.
Okay.
Page two oh seven, the fee changes are, we'll do a home plumbing. Page two oh seven, the fee changes are, we'll do a home plumbing inspection for one to five units for your charge. Any person, a single family, two family, we'll take care of that. When it starts getting into apartment complexes of six to twenty or over twenty, where asking that we charge a hundred dollars or five hundred dollars, that takes a lot more time. Basically, you're going in, looking at every toilet, every faucet, making sure.
What happened before?
We did it all for free.
Oh.
Okay.
So why doesn't it say current fee free?
It says not available.
No, because there was no fee for it.
Okay. We, we did, uh, we did all this for free. And we want to continue to do it for all the single, for small residents, but if it becomes a commercial property, you need to get someone to.
And then they get free inspections.
It's a lot of time for my guys to be involved and do what.
Yeah, so what do you do for the, uh, plumbing inspections?
They go in, do a hole-in-and-out for the house, check every toilet, check the service line, check the meter, check all the, any plumbing fixture, they'll, they'll check it.
This is mine, is what county does, or does that, you know, about charging?
I'm sure, I'm sure they have fees for this, I don't know what their fees are.
You just pay it on your own.
Right, time, time is really, and, you know, some of these units, like, uh, you know, you get twenty units, it takes two or three, you get two or three of my guys that go in there and check these things out. Couple hours, you know.
It's not to make money on it.
Right.
Realistically, a commercial company should be doing this every month.
Right.
Banking on us.
Right.
So the first, sorry.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna, and, and seeing where it says, see below, um, in the fir-, in the first, uh, four of them, are we just redefining it again?
Yes.
Those terms?
Basically, what this is saying is that a frozen meter will come and look at it and try to fix it and give you a suggestion on how to fix it the first time. If you come in here with a second call, history of it, they're gonna charge you two fifty because you probably didn't move it. You haven't listened to what, what they told them, they may have to run the water, drip it, or whatever they have to do. People don't do it. And then the next time, they would charge five hundred dollars in time after probably your plumber.
So my only, my only worry with the, the lack of heat near water meter, and then, you know, the third call, you shut off the water. A lot of the times, pardon me if I'm wrong, maybe that would be the responsibility of the landlord to fix. Like the tenant may not be able to fix the issue, or it would be something that the landlord would have to fix. And then you have landlord neglect causing a tenant to get their water shut off.
So I can address that. So on our shut-off notices right now, that would apply here, contains the new language. That was part of the case law that recently came down from the Second Circuit. I'm proud to say that I started that case with Josh Carter at Legal Services seven years ago. Um, so, um, the, the Second Circuit founds that municipalities, utility companies can no longer shut off so long as the tenant requests a hearing. If the tenant winds up requesting a hearing, that water has to stay on. Um, and unfortunately, even if the tenant offered us money, we couldn't necessarily take it.
So if the tenant, uh, requests a hearing, they don't own the property, they don't own the water meter. So what, what's their case for the hearing?
Their case for the hearing is, I'm a tenant, this is my lease, I am not responsible for this. Therefore, I shouldn't have to subsidize this loss, this isn't my legal obligation. Um, that amount of money that is spent then gets added to the owner's tax bill. And there's now a notice in big, bold letters on all of our shut-off notices that it says, you are a tenant, you have a right to a hearing, please contact such and such. And actually puts Teresa's number right on there, as well as the ability, the address in order to request a hearing. They do have to do it in writing, but typically what they will do, they'll call up Teresa, and Teresa will put it into the system and contact them and advise them about the process.
So if it's one, I mean, normally there's one meter. So let's say you have ten apartments, and you're operating on the one meter. One tenant, uh, asks for a hearing, it will affect all tenants.
Correct.
Doesn't have to be all tenants.
If they're operating off of one meter, it would be, it would be, uh, that hearing would apply to this.
What happens, the cost of that goes out to the landlord.
The owner obviously has the right to request a hearing in a shut-off situation as well, which would stay off a lot of shut-off. Most likely, however, we're gonna find that the owner is responsible, but instead of the remedy being shut off, it gets added to their tax bill. So it's just a change in your city's remedy. I don't know actually how it's going to play out for us cost-wise because the case law hasn't been there. I will say, however, the city has engaged in a practice of not shutting off tenant water for at least the three years that I've been here, which has been fully supported by the Office of Mayor and the Water Department. So we were doing this even before the case law came down.
One more question, if, if, if it's a, you know, multi-unit apartment, and a couple of tenants there never reported a leaky toilet or a drip in the bathtub, something that the landlord just didn't know about.
Didn't know that.
And so at the end of the, the quarter, the bill instead of being, uh, seven hundred dollars, it's three thousand now.
Eight thousand, yeah, yeah.
And he said, what?
Nobody told me.
Nobody told me.
I had no idea.
And I couldn't, I couldn't detect it. And so, so at that point, is the tenant, how do you hold that you can't hold the tenant accountable?
City's, city's response is landlords have the obligation to designate people responsible for building.
You have to manage your own property.
And you have to engage in regular inspections to make sure that everything is working. And, but, and no, and potentially, if the tenant, sometimes this happens, they would dispute with the landlord, they take a bat, so the same.
They do.
Right, potentially the landlord has an act against the tenant in some other forum, but the city doesn't take the position that it has anything to do with that. Its position is the owner's responsibility, it's the landlord's responsibility. Oftentimes, it's, it's a commercial landlord, they acted in good faith, we'll work with them just like we would work with the elderly person example we were talking about earlier, which is we try and engage in making a series of partial.
But the payments are due, no matter what.
Yep.
It's eight thousand dollars, you said, we have to pay that.
Yeah, there are administrative fees, there's a small wiggle room for administrative fees that, that can be waived. But if the service runs through, our taxpayers are paying that cost on the back end. It's not, it's not free. And so the city can't make gifts of taxpayer funds simply because a landlord has neglected to inspect their property on a regular basis.
And goes in the store.
Yep.
Uh, bill awesome, I mean, so you're getting a double landing.
Can a, could like a property manager, like a reasonably skilled property manager, read a water meter and notice that, that it's, you know, it's spinning faster than it should be? Like, is that plausible?
Yeah, that's what we promote to the landlord, you're responsible for your property.
Yeah, I do have a landlord association, and landlords that are good are inspecting their properties all the time. They go in to make sure, yeah, they make sure that, uh, you can legally go in and make sure that their fire lines are working. And inspect everything.
How about everybody who calls? Everybody who's fed up of the water.
It's costly, but that one, one point, so you can see if the meter still moves.
Then you know there's something that's illegal. And like I always tell everybody that calls, if it goes through the meter, we gotta pay it.
The only exception is if there's something wrong with the meter, but that means that the, the water's not going through the meter.
And out of all the meters, like, uh, when, when we have, when people will really, really complain, and they say, look, there's something wrong with the meter, we send them out and have it independently tested, not by us, it's depend, by some of the, and those meters have three different readings, high, medium, low. And if they, they have certain parameters, if they come into those parameters, that means the meter's reading properly. Doesn't matter what it is. And out of all the ones that I've sent out, I, I, I can't even remember one that's ever came back was, it's a meter's fault. It's, it's, but we've done it for the people, uh, just to placate them, you know, and, uh, you know, we tell them right off, if we send the meter out and it's bad, you'll get reimbursed. But if it's not bad, you should, you still got to.
So when you send the meter out, will you, you just put another meter on there?
Yes, we'll put another brand-new meter in there.
Oh, so they're, they're getting the new meter, sending the old one out.
Yeah, like I say, my guys change between five, six hundred, seven hundred meters a year.
Oh, I got a cold.
I mean, in the chest, it's, I just, it's mind-boggling to me because it's like, man, it's, it just doesn't seem right. Because, you know, when you were a kid, you were in your house, you never remember a guy come to change the meter, the meter was there forever. But, you know, things happen now. Especially with our, that one year, remember how early it was, all those frozen meters, big meters, trees, and I'd be there for a suit.
That was an amazing year. See, I can't imagine what the department would do then.
Terrible.
Terrible.
I apologize for this.
All right.
Let's keep moving, Charlie.
Yeah. Motion to approve pages two oh six through two oh seven, no, yeah, it's on two oh seven.
Water section, second.
All in favor?
That's not weird.
Man, you're getting ahead of yourself.
Very nearly, man.
All.
Time's a little long.
In. Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed?
No way, so.
They're all kind of out of sequence, but it's one sixty-two through one eighty-five. All right, so we're gonna, we're gonna open up pages one sixty-two through one eighty-five. Do we need to modify page one sixty-three to account for, uh, the, the hearing that we had with this?
We, we gotta modify a bunch of things. If you want, if you wanna go through here, I'll, I'll tell you what we need to modify, and you guys can go through.
Sure.
So on page one sixty-two, you need to modify the first line of sewer rents. The new number's gonna be ten million, nine twenty-nine, six sixty-one, point one five. The number at the bottom of that section that's currently says thirteen million, six one eight, seven two eight, point two three would be thirteen million, four thirty-eight, seven twenty-eight, twenty-three.
Say that again?
Thirteen million, four thirty-eight, seven twenty-eight, twenty-three. Down below that, in the expense column, G, eighty-one thirty, where it's one point nine million, it needs to be one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, even. And the number at the very bottom will be the same number as the one we just put in, thirteen million, four thirty-eight, seven twenty-eight, twenty-three. On page one sixty-three, the thirty-four, twenty-five number will go to thirty-three, and the six eighty-five number will go to six sixty.
I'm sorry, Chuck, can you answer that?
On page.
One sixty-three.
Page one sixty-three.
Same as the numbers, right?
Yeah, same numbers.
Oh.
Okay.
Chuck, sorry, so the, we, we decreased the expenses by a hundred eighty thousand dollars?
For the city portion of it.
The city portion? And then why did the revenue go down?
Because we're gonna collect less revenue to make this budget.
Right, yeah, yeah.
On page one sixty-five, the number underneath the eleven million, one oh nine, six six one, one five is gonna be ten million, nine twenty-nine, six six one, point one five. I'll read that again, ten million, nine twenty-nine, six hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifteen cents.
The number under the eleven, or the eleven's the only number?
Becomes empty.
Okay.
Same, same one.
Same one, yeah.
And then on page one seventy-two, that one million, nine hundred thousand dollar number becomes one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand.
Page one seventy-two, you said?
Yes.
Seven hundred and twenty, Chuck?
One million, seven hundred and twenty thousand.
So that one hundred eighty thousand dollar decrease literally ma-, brought the rates exactly to what they were this year?
Not necessarily, that's not true. It brings us into a number that, depending on the flows, we can get there, okay? Um, with all the meter changes, um, it's gonna be tough, I'm not gonna say that, but I believe we can get to without, um, appropriating fund out. We had a, um, our revenue, when I say revenue, our water usage this year is basically stable. Uh, for this year, last year dropped, the last three years before was pretty stable. Um, and with that being said, with the activity going down downtown, I believe, um, we can obtain those numbers.
So it's on, Chris, leave the water on?
Yeah. I'm telling, keep the restaurants flipping.
Well, maybe, bad water bill, doesn't go down.
It doesn't for any of them, although I know someone already using the water.
Well, how many more students have DU? I don't know, how many more students have DU this year?
Under.
They make a difference sometimes, I just, I mean, it'd be.
Chris, the amazing part is, it really has, over the years. When DU really came, started coming in Binghamton, you would've thought that the water usage would go up, and it hasn't. However, it is, since two thousand and fourteen, it has really been pretty steady until last year was the first year that we had any type of inlet, okay? And hopefully, by putting in these, I mean, there's, don't take this wrong, there's thieves out there, there's still water.
There's what?
There's thieves out there that still water, okay? And if I can ask you, places and stuff like that, um, but hopefully this helps get some of the revenue back. And, and is there a tutorial on YouTube or something like that? An cheat, probably yes, probably yes. If you went looking, you probably would find it.
Oh, yeah.
Or if you had a.
And that's not me, wearing the mask.
Oh, is that you?
Paying attention to the man behind you.
I mean, also too, I mean, with a lot of these, uh, energy-saving faucets, toilets, that's gotta cut the water down, doesn't it?
You would think so.
I mean, I changed all the toilets in my house, went to those energy savers, and it's really, it's helped a lot.
How many new apartments over fifty front street, those, that had no water usage before, I know of.
Right, right. And so that's gotta show up somewhere. It'll show up eventually.
You know, these restaurants, they have to be, I haven't looked at the bills, but they gotta be watered, that's the thing. They really do.
You can't help it, the dishwasher, you just put the ice, and then.
And if you have a restaurant, you have an ice machine in it, that ice machine is soft, man, it could really drag your bill up.
Doesn't stop? Make an ice castle.
So the guy did that, the daily parking company, so it's, it's funny, it's.
Yeah, because if the ice machines can really, and a toilet can really.
Yeah.
But nobody's watering their lawns anymore, because of all this climate change.
Haven't had water.
I do.
Lawns in the last few years.
It's water mine this morning.
Um, on page one sixty-eight, the accounting service going down significantly. What's, what's the accounting for that?
Yeah, I'd have to go look at, there's a formula that we use, looking at different things, that adjusts these different things. And I can't remember off the top of my head.
What about the very bottom line, that one up?
The EFC?
Yeah. Was that for, the very bottom of one sixty-eight, that must be, is like EFC?
That, that is due to, when we close on loans for EFC, we get, we have to pay a principal charged on every loan. We have interest rates, then we have a subsidy, which is usually like fifty percent of the interest payments the state picks up. And then they charge us an administration fee that's usually about two and a half percent of the balance. And so this is what we have to pay next year for the administration. Also, the, the IT and engineering services went down, even though the, the previous year's expenditures gone.
We, we reallocated more water, less to sewer based on the number of users, we counted the computers, the, the usage. Try to every, balance it out, make sure we're charging the funds correctly.
Okay. On the next page, on page one sixty-nine. On the next page, on page one sixty-nine, we've got a question in general about, you know, the, about the postage. How much does it cost us to administer a paper billing service? Could we calculate anticipated savings that would result from pushing people onto the paperless billing? And use that to maybe reduce that convenience fee, to make it more attractive for people to use the paperless billing?
I see what you're saying, Dan, and it's more of a legal question, I don't know if the chairman or he has the answers.
I can answer with regards to all of our notice requirements and our code are for mail. Right, there is no notice requirement that is satisfied via online contact, and that's, that is the trend, that is the status quo across the state of New York. That said, as a councilperson, if, like to see whether or not we can make email notice sufficient, the courts have done that, but people have to opt in to the electronic case file system. And most pro-say litigants do not. And so I'd be interested to see whether or not email notification could actually be enforceable in the city, because people aren't required by law to have electronic device, which costs money. They are required by law to have an address for record.
I'd be interested to see what would happen with just an opt-in program. I'd be happy to try and promote it too.
Think you gotta, and when do we usually send out the late notices? Certified mail? The fifteenth, the month sixteen?
Fifteen or sixteen.
If you were to come up, and when you see, we'll send out all these bills on the first of the month side, okay, all the bills. They get sent out rubber mail, if people wanna opt in, they can get their email address, okay? That is small dollars compared to, you see what goes out on the fifteenth, when people have not paid their bill. I guarantee you, there's a stack this high of paper that goes out, they have to go certified mail every time, and I would guarantee you that ninety percent of them come back, because people do not accept them.
Over a quarter percent of certified.
I mean, it's a total, I agree with you, it's a total waste, okay, but the people that get these letters are the same people every month.
And each round of shut offs, we usually have three, three to five hundred shut off notices.
Yeah, I don't even get away from that. It's the legality that someone needs to, and I'm not sitting here arguing with you. I agree with you, I'd love to get rid of that.
Realities of it, I guess.
There's also a fixing requirement.
The regular water bill, we do have the choice for them to enroll in how to give the bills email to them, it just hasn't been real popular yet.
It grows every month, but not.
But by leaps and bounds.
We've done some everything, we've sent things out, it hasn't really jumped from here to there, okay? But I love to even come here and call Teresa when she's sending out these bills, and we'll be absolutely shocked. And then the following week, you see all of them, they come back, it's something, it really is. It's one part of government that is like, how can we fix this, but it's what you have to do. But I don't know, it's not basic, though. But it's an ugly, it really is ugly.
NISEC doesn't send it out certified mail, do they?
Not sure.
They actually, they should send you a shut off notice, and if you don't pay your bill, you're gonna be shut off by such and such a date. Are you required to send certain things?
Yes.
Well, I mean, part of, if I remember correctly, part of how NISEC does it that makes it easier is that they're, I believe there is an extra charge for doing it online, because they actually just grab it directly out of your bank account, it's not a credit card processing thing. And so it just makes it easier to push everything else online, if they streamline the online billing, so that they're, it don't cost you anything extra to do it. I don't know if that's a possibility for us.
Is that a debit or savings?
They can pay online up until a certain point for shut off notices.
Well, I'm talking just in general, like, is it possible for people to put their routing number or bank account number?
Yeah, they can pay with their bank.
And just grab it directly out without paying a fee?
It's, there's still a normal fee.
Today, Dan, there's a fee that they pay, okay?
That's a convenience fee?
Yes, we're working on getting out of there, okay? Basically, then today I need an answer, I'm gonna start looking.
Oh, good, okay.
They were very good as salesmen. As a customer. Their customer service is great, their sales crew trying to get me these answers, and they don't, I'm sure they don't want it, because they're gonna lose money.
On the page one seventy, the gasoline, diesel fuel is going up a bit, is that just the price of fuel, or are they using more for some reason?
I think it's mainly due, like you saw last year, they used eighteen thousand, the sugar budget is seventeen thousand, but they're gonna be closer to eighteen thousand this year, so hopefully nineteen.
What's the project analyst and the project assistant services for this sewer treatment project? On page one seventy-three?
What this is, Conrad, this is people that are dedicated strictly to doing this sewer treatment by work.
Like Ron Lee? Like Ron Lee, or somebody else?
Who was the project analyst?
Project analyst is Ed Trump, okay? He works in my office, he makes sure that every bills get paid, get paid properly. It documents all the invoices that come from the vendors, through Jacobs, through us, to EFC for payment. And we're paying it, but that's with you to do this, but he's done a great job. I'll give you an example, a vendor submitted a bill from work they were doing up in Johnson City. It was like fifty-six hundred dollars today, and I love this four hundred thousand dollar bill, rejected it. Do it right.
Ed is a number star.
Yeah, he's a detailed guy. The vendors called me up, bitch, and I said, do it right, you know? Some days we may go overboard about twenty-six cents, but today. Today was a five thousand dollar mistake on their part, we're not paying it, you know? And I'm gonna guarantee you, if we didn't have him, things like that would've gotten through. And I, I will honestly say, I don't have any headaches with EFC whatsoever, or how it goes, but they have never rejected a single thing since he's been here.
I'm sure he does great.
And what we do is, the other one is a project assistant that works with Ron Lee, and making sure that everything with EFC gets filed properly, and making all the paperwork so that whole process is done. And she works part-time, and she's not even an employee, she's, we've got her through our contract service. So both of these fees get billed back to the sewer plant, reallocated out on the final bill.
So Ron Lee even has an assistant, he's Floyd Marias?
Shouldn't be ignoring him.
I mean, he hasn't heard twice, and he hasn't.
My understanding is coming in that way.
What's that?
My understanding is he's coming in that way.
Sure.
I've none of your responses to my email.
Yeah, he doesn't respond. Ed is sending certified mail. Certified rejection.
The city council budget.
And what was the professional services, that's, that's.
That's where we have the outside service, which is the assistant that works on getting all the stuff. Usually all these documents have to be signed by the board, by Johnson City mayor, by this mayor, by Ron Lee, by Jerry Nystrom, and John McGurk. Those things have to be quasi-signed.
Sorry, do we need to make a motion for all the changes?
We will have to do that.
You have to do the motions to change those pages and accept all these pages.
I'm sure Ron gets through all the questions, really. We'll do it all at once.
Are you guys on page one eighty-one yet?
Yeah, I have a question about that. Why don't you tell us?
Why don't you ask me your question?
I, I mean, I'm just looking at the serial bonds principle, and, you know, seems like the difference between the adopted and adjusted budget for this year, we missed the mark by, by a bit, and I'm wondering if.
No, this is one that I came and asked you guys to do, a thing where, what happened there was, last year I budgeted, if you go to the next page, you'll see just now, you'll see that the.
Oh, yeah.
Adopted budget, the bond anticipation was down.
Okay.
And right here, what ended up having is, we ended up closing on notes of the bonds in on this. So we had to make, I should say, we did an unit divide, we had to make a payment for.
So what did you, what were you gonna tell us about?
Well, what I was gonna tell you is, what you see with EFC, okay? These are all notes that we have with environmental, financial court, that's related to the joint sewage treatment project going back to two thousand. Okay, even though you see two thousand and fifteen D, I believe that's a two thousand and one note that was refinanced. The bond issues below there are issues that we don't run through EFC, but there's more work that we do internally in the city and street reconstruction, water lines, sewer lines, this would be the sewer line portion of that work.
Do you refinance with a better interest rate?
Yes. We get, we get information from a financing fiscal advisor that says this makes sense and gives why.
Do you refinance, refinance for a better interest rate, but you don't extend the term that will go bond?
No, I actually sometimes try to shrink the terms if I can. If I can keep the rates the same, or lower the rates and decrease the terms and keep the same payments, I will do that. The one, the lower is the interest in the same thing. One of the questions you guys have asked me repeatedly, if you look at the bottom EFC two thousand and sixteen D.
Where are we looking at?
Sixteen.
Page one eighty-one. And it'll say joint sewage rehab, eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That is a long-term note that we closed back in two thousand and sixteen, related to this project, twenty-nine million dollars.
We're at seven hundred and one.
Yeah, I was like.
It's the one, he's talking about the one that's up in the previous line?
Oh, okay, all right.
EFC twenty sixteen, joint sewer rehab. So, so when you, yeah, that's our principal payment. It was twenty-nine million, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars that we borrowed that then. Next year, we have to make a principal payment, eight thirty-five, and a interest payment, seven oh one, which you see down below, three twenty-four. Out of that interest payment, okay, we're gonna get a subsidy or a reduction of about fifty percent of that. Okay, from the state, we have to show it as this, then we get another line where we get to reduce it, okay?
They pay it after we pay it, they'll send the.
They'll, they'll send me a bill that will say, pay the eight thirty-five, pay the seven, what is it, seven hundred, say seven hundred, and then they'll give me a credit for three fifty. So we have to pay the eight thirty-five plus three fifty. In our accounting purposes, you'll see the full interest rate here, but if you go to the revenue number, you'll see a number that a subsidy number offset.
Three fifty.
Yes. Well, we receive this whole, on top of that, Conrad, there's a administrative fee that we have to pay, okay? Because we're getting the subsidy, it's usually two and a half percent of the principal, remaining principal balance. So next year, twenty twenty, we'll pay, I believe it's sixty-six thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars. So we're basically saving two hundred and fifty, we're paying an extra sixty thousand in fees, okay, next year. So there's pretty substantial savings compared to what we would get on our difference. As a whole, the interest rate for this twenty-nine million for thirty years, okay, is one point four or five percent, okay? That's a phenomenal rate, there is not an investor that wouldn't take that in mind, okay? I'm gonna tell you that when this happened, this took a lot of strings to pull with the state, okay? Because we weren't scheduled to do this yet, okay? With the help of our bond council, they were able to get us this. So we got twenty-nine million, Johnson City got twenty-four million, okay? We also, if you look on here, you'll see two thousand and nineteen payments. We got those projects taken care of this year. There's, I believe there's two. The ones we borrowed on this year are basically one point six five percent, and there's eight hundred, or eight million that is at zero percent. Okay, the state gave us an eight million dollar loan at zero percent for thirty years, okay? These are phenomenal savings in keeping these rates down, okay? Just to give everyone an idea, I know you guys have been asking for that, I can't give you what, exactly what you want, but I can tell you some, what I think are pretty good numbers. So far in this project, we have borrowed one hundred and seventy-six million dollars long-term, okay, on this. Where you've heard numbers, some have repeated that this is gonna cost the city four hundred million dollars, that is far from the truth, okay? With the interest rates that we've got, and the people who came up with these numbers are thinking that we're gonna be paying three and a half, four percent interest rates, we didn't, okay? The total cost of this is two hundred and twenty-nine million for that one hundred and seventy-six. That's where we stand as of today, long-term, okay? We still have, and I don't know how much more we're gonna have to borrow, but I can tell you, right now, we have roughly twenty million in notes between Austin, Johnson City. I think we have eleven million, they have nine million, I think, is the ballpark number. We have probably another, if I can make a guess, forty million out there to do and work, okay? But we have another fourteen million in grants coming to reduce that cost. We have another fifteen million dollars from FEMA coming, and we have the loss. Okay? What I'm trying to say to you guys is, we're never gonna hit four hundred million. We'll be lucky to hit three hundred million if everything stays on course the way it is, okay? And I can't tell you what the rates are gonna do going forward, but I.
These rates are, these rates are set for now, or are you?
Yes, we're, we're set for twenty twenty with this, okay? The rates are probably gonna have to go up some in the coming years, but they're not gonna be the numbers that everyone's throwing out, telling you that.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of misinformation about that, and people run with misinformation, as you see every day on TV, that everyone is, gets a piece of something, and then you make, make a story out of it.
Dan, I brought these if you want, these are all.
Yeah, well, could you email, 'cause I, I've been.
I can try to.
I don't suggest that she distributes this to anyone, so.
So those are the long-term notes for everything in Dington and Johnson City that equals that one hundred and seventy-six million, and we have found it for a long term. So is that sustainable? The answer is yes. How do we go from here to the future, Conrad? Just assuming we don't have a whole lot of problems going forward, I think we're in pretty good shape. We really are.
And the plan's gotta be, I imagine it's gotta be ninety percent done by now.
I would say, I wouldn't venture that, 'cause I know, I hear too many things that won't lead to the next, what's going on. Dollar and cents wise, I think more than ninety percent. Dollar and cents wise, I think more than ninety percent. I don't know if that answers all your questions, I, I don't know exactly, 'cause I can't...
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm looking for, you know, black and white, so I can look at it and process it. I mean, I, I do appreciate you giving it to me, like verbally here, but I would like to, to look at it on, on black and white if I can. It's just easier to be the process, I, numbers you're talking about, if I look at it in that way.
Hopefully something will come out publicly and all this stuff in your, in your job. And work out, give, when I can give the mayor and everybody, let's say, a fair representation and have a sort of being like this, where the range can be into something that's like this.
I mean, and I, the only reason why I'm asking is 'cause so many people are asking me, so, I mean, I would certainly prefer the administration to...
I, I think in that instance, you could tell all of them, so four hundred million dollars you're hearing is your case.
Yeah, that was, Jeff Platsky, I think, was the one who first put that out there, and I, I never was able to make sense of that.
'Cause he, I, tell him, no one asked the questions, okay? He's, he's running with three and a half to four percent interest rates, okay? It's ridiculous, okay? He asked me, Jeff, I don't know. I can't tell you in 2015 what the interest rates are gonna be in 2019. Didn't know. But he, he elected, and then other elected officials ran with those numbers without any backing. I'm just, not just picking on you, okay?
Did I ever say that number?
Yeah, you said that number.
Okay.
But there's, you're not the only one, okay? There's multiple people that have ran with this, trying to throw darts without knowing the facts, and, you know, my phone rings off the hook too. Which is frustrating to me, but...
I'll make a motion to, uh, amend the sewer rents line on page 162 to ten million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one and fifteen cents. And the total in the revenues section is thirteen million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and twenty-three cents. And the, uh, sewage treatment plant expenses line on page 162 to one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand. And the total in the expenses section is thirteen million, four hundred and thirty-one, uh, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight and twenty-three cents. As well as the, uh, uh, current sewage rates for 2020 on page 163.
Well, he does a separate motion for that.
Absolutely. Uh, so then I'll, uh, I'll...
There's a motion to amend sewer rents production total, and their coordinating expenses for sewage treatment plant and its total.
Okay, and do a motion for what Conrad said.
And we have a second from Dan.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
What do you want against?
FKS.
Notes, are we being passed?
Then I'll make a motion on page 163 to change the current sewer rates for 2020 uh, from thirty-four twenty-five to thirty-three for the first five hundred cubic feet of water. And for, from six eighty-five to six sixty for every one hundred cubic of water after.
Okay, second by, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? If there's none, that passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion on page 165 on the sewer rents line to change that to ten million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one and fifteen cents.
Motion to change, switch to page 165?
Yes.
Second? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? If there's none, that passes unanimously. On page 172, line G eight one thirty, point five four zero zero zero. Change, uh, the 2020 proposed budget line from one, one million, nine hundred thousand even to one million, seven hundred and twenty-six, seven million, twenty thousand.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? If there's none, that passes unanimously.
Motion to approve pages 162 through 185.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Second by Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? None, that passes unanimously. With 197 is next. Actually, before we do that, I would just so we don't forget this one, go to page 208. We gotta make a motion to change that proposed fee, that's what you did, cause it's six sixty.
I'll make a motion to change the proposed fee on page 208.
Do we have to open the page first?
Yes.
Chris, you wanna open the page?
We need to have it opened, over here?
No. No.
We have pages 206 and 207 open for the water. Oh, that's around 207. Yeah, we're... Okay, two, open page 208.
I'll make a motion to amend the sewer per one hundred cubic feet of water consumption line. Proposed fee from six eighty-five to six sixty.
Second by Dan.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Open page 197?
We're accepting, just 208 through?
Sure, I'll make a motion to, to fix up page 208 as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we're at page 197? It's pretty basic. What's, what's CSO repair?
Binesure overflow.
Okay. Now the accuracy.
Motion to accept for sewer nine and 197?
Will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
On Monday night, um, we're due to have fire department here.
Yeah.
Chief Agelson's been out sick a couple days this weekend, I'm not sure if he'll be back.
He's in appendix burst.
Is that right?
Well, he's at the hospital.
So, what I'm saying is, if, I'll, I'll...
We'll get that way so far.
If he can't make it, I'll substitute something later in the weekend.
Imagine he'll send a rep.
He might, but there's a couple issues there that I think he wants to discuss with you. Okay, so I'll talk to him.
So, what, what are you suggesting, if he can't make it, that what?
We can, we can...
That we would swap it out?
You could, you could do Chuck's thing for, for one, but it...
Well, we can't do all of his until you pass everything else.
We'd be glorious.
We, we will go through here and try to do as much as we can.
Yeah, I can handle that.
But I, I will talk to him and, you know, see what, he may feel, find someone, someone, or someone that's your...
I mean, if, if he doesn't feel comfortable, you know, talking about, having us talk about the budget without him being there, then we should do it.
That's fine, I can see if you do police and change it.
We'll get you somebody if he can't be here.
Just, just let us know beforehand, so there we go.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.